Good evening, everybody. This is the Monroe Township Monthly Board of Education meeting. Can everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Dr. Peck?
Here.
Mr. Pirro?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Sharma?
Here.
Mr. Tufano?
Here.
Mr. Zeigner?
Here.
We have a quorum. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published and electronic notes provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted May 10, 2024, and August 16, 2024 at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and file with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the closed session resolution. Whereas the, what? Oh. Whereas the Senator Byron M. Bear, Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6 provides that the Monroe Township Board of Education may hold an executive session from which the public is excluded to discuss matters that are confidential or are one of the nine subject matters listed, Section 12b of the Act, and whereas that the board hereby declares that its discussion of the following subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure. Now therefore be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the board shall go into executive session to discuss the following items. Additional items may be determined and announced as needed, matters concerning the protection of the safety or property of the public pending or anticipated litigation and matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, matters involving employees in terms of their employment and contract, possible imposition of a civil penalty or suspension. Be it further resolved that said discussion may be disclosed to the public when reasons for discussing and acting upon it in closed session no longer exist. Action may be taken on any of the items stated above. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will be back at 7:15.
Just for the record, the board will not be taking any formal action in executive session. Any formal action that will be taken will be taken out in the public after the conclusion of executive session. Thank you.
Okay, the board has returned from closed session. The next item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes. The first is the Public Board of Education meeting from August 21, 2024. Can I have a?
Motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I recuse.
Okay, the next, the next one is the closed session meeting minutes from August 21. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Oh, second.
Oh, wait, should it?
July 30.
Hold on. Both of those should be say July.
Yes, July.
Is there a motion to approve?
A second.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Oh, sorry. Motion, second, okay. Are there any questions? Any abstentions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstention, abstention, sorry.
Okay, the next item on our agenda are committee reports. Are there any committees wishing to give a report? Ms. Ratner?
The Legislative Advocacy and Community Engagement Committee met on August 14. Board of Education members present were myself, Ms. DePain, Ms. Sharma, Dr. Peck, and Ms. Fabiano. The district administrators in attendance were Dr. Chanley and Dr. Lehman. The first item on the agenda was a recap of our July meeting with our legislators. The committee discussed the creation of a one-page letter outlining the cost of full-day kindergarten, clarification on election legislation, restrictions on preschool aid, and changes desired with impact fees. The next item on the agenda was the impact fee resolution. After the committee initially approved a rough draft of the resolution a few months ago, we sent it to, for review to our board attorney, Mr. Weiss, to ensure legal accuracy. The committee reviewed the modified version of the resolution and recommended it be reviewed by the full board for approval tonight so that it can be sent to the New Jersey School Board Association Delegate Assembly. Thank you, Mr. Weiss, for all of your hard work on that. It's appreciated. Next, the committee discussed the updates to our website. Dr. Lehman explained that the process is taking longer than initially anticipated because each piece of data must be transferred separately. They plan to roll out the new website interface after the start of the school year to ensure that there aren't complications while people are looking for back-to-school information. Finally, the committee discussed a collaborative effort to help legislators understand that a new funding formula must be a priority. It was decided that we would make a list of districts who have either lost funding or never received fair funding in order to create an alliance for maximum impact. Ms. DePain offered to handle this research for the committee. That's all, thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Ratner? Any other committees that would like to give a report? Mr. Pirro?
Yeah, Building Grounds, Transportation, and Security. So, present was myself, Ms. Fabiano, Ms. Ratner, Ms. Bora, Dr. Chanley, Mr. Teague, Dr. Lehman. We discussed the Ra grant and the project at Applebar School. Administration reported that the electric service upgrade is ongoing and that we're still pursuing delivery of the new transformer from Jersey Central Power Light, hopefully by June of 2025. Mr. Teague's on them to get that completed. We need the transformer to proceed with the HVAC and all the electric upgrades. The 1936 roof project is also ongoing, and they've been able to address issues with deteriorating underlayment and the change in the roof service period on the lower shed area through the project allowance, so with no additional costs. The roof work, woodwork restoration will be completed for the start of the September school year. The next phase would be the HVAC project. It is going out to bid. It went out on August 13. The bid opening is September 10. After that, they will pick a contractor for the HVAC. They'll finalize the plans for the remaining roof sections, which will be bid on in the fall of 2024, and scheduled construction, more construction in the summer of 2025, with hopefully a completion by the end of that summer, if everything goes as scheduled as Mr. Teague plans. The New Jersey Clean Energy Grant Program rebate, Mr. Teague through administration presented us at the committee meeting with a rebate check of $9,600 for LED lighting upgrade project conducted entirely with district staff, spearheaded by Mr. Tringalli. That is Mr. Teague's assistant. This project replacing an Applebar Schools kitchen cafeteria. The facilities department will continue to pursue these projects ahead of the upcoming ESIP program to hopefully save us more money. So, that was another plus. He also said that Princeton University Resource Recovery Program had invited us to be a part of this through Princeton University. It's no cost to the district, and any, what they do is they post things on their website, desks, chairs, boards, shelves, anything that Princeton University isn't using, we have an opportunity to take free of cost. We were lucky enough to get picked for that, so we all agreed that we should move forward with that for another savings for the district. Also, the New Jersey Department of Education renewal application for the temporary class units at the middle school. We confirm that the two cardio trailers are being removed for the summer. They will no longer be using the cardio trailers, but the eight remaining classrooms and bathroom trailer assemblies will remain in effect. Administration will process the annual renewal application, and if needed, the county business administrator will assign inspection for the trailers. So, after so many years, Mr. Teague said sometimes they require an inspection. We're all up to date with everything, and the county would just come out and look at them. That's it for Building Grounds. Transportation overview, basically, we were told by Dr. Chanley because Ms. McDonald couldn't make it, is that everything appears on schedule. We have 15 outside routes that we'll be utilizing, and we should have enough bus drivers for the start of school. Everything is supposed to be right on track. Mr. Selby wasn't there for a security overview, so hopefully we will get one shortly this, as soon as school starts, from Mr. Selby. That is the end of my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pirro? Ms. Ratner?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify quickly with transportation. We had discussed that parents should submit an email if they have issues with their buses. Do we know if that's something that will be going out for with the bus notifications?
Dr. Chanley said that she was going to talk to Ms. McDonald about putting that out. I don't know if it was completely, she's not here.
So, bus pass, or bus routes are handled through Genesis, so you would just log in and see. It's not like a letter that we used to send out anymore. But if you need to get in touch with transportation, it's transportation@monroe.k12 nj.us. It will go to the entire staff instead of just, we talked about not having to email just one person, the director or whatever, so then they can kind of divide and conquer the work. So, we, we have, we'll have that updated on their transportation website, but the email for any transportation-related question that is not, let's call it mission-critical, urgent, you know, missing child kind of a situation, if you run it through transportation@monroe.k12 nj.us, they will prioritize that, and it'll also free up some phone lines from them so they can handle and manage the urgent emergent issues that come through.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bora?
To what Dr. Lehman just said, could we have a PSA, like a social post with that information put out before the first day of school, so, and maybe pin it to our Facebook page for the first few days so that people know what to do? I know we would probably get flooded, but, yes.
She would put something out there so the parents could send an email for the beginning of school, because we know how flooded transportation gets the first couple of days. So, Dr. Chanley had said at the meeting that she would instruct Ms. McDonald or somebody in that they would put a message out to all parents that if there is a transportation issue, because it's hard to get through on a phone, please send us an email immediately to the transportation email so that everybody in the office, somebody would be able to grab it to take care of whatever needs are done, because we all know that the first week of school is very tough.
Any other questions? Okay, any other committees? Ms. Alvarez?
Hi, so I'm going to start with personnel. The Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, August 14, 2024. In attendance were Dr. Chanley, Mr. Pirro, Mrs. Fabiano, and Mrs. DePain. Ms. Allen was also present for a portion of the meeting. There was a total of 11 resignations, six paraprofessionals, two math teachers, one bus driver, one custodian, and one guidance counselor. Two exit interviews were conducted, and of those two, one resignation was due to retirement, and the second person listed their reason for resigning was to stay home with family. The administration continues to work diligently to fill these position, positions. On tonight's agenda for approval is the new Director of Transportation, three elementary teachers, three middle school teachers, and a systems data specialist. The new Director of Transportation is going to work closely with our current director to ensure a smooth transition prior to her retirement. Any questions?
No.
Can I do the next one? Short and sweet. Okay, hold on. I printed the wrong paper, so that's why I have to go on my phone. I apologize for that, okay. The Policy Committee met on Tuesday, August 13. Present, present at the meeting were Dr. Chanley, Mr. Maralda, Mrs. Fabiano, Dr. Peck, Mr. Zeigner, and Mrs. Ratner. The meeting began with a new discussion of the use of facilities policy. The discussion centered around whether a fee exemption for religious groups would be appropriate. In the interest of consistency and fiscal responsibility, the committee thought the policy should not be amended at this time. The remaining policies from Strauss S. Mueller Number 233 were discussed and are on tonight's agenda for first read. Most of the changes involved updated language. In the interest of time, three policies, P-8505, school nutrition, P-2365, acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence, and P-1110 organizational chart was tabled to the September policy meeting. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Ms. Alvarez? Ms. Bora?
I'm, from what I saw of the meeting, was the discussion on the school facilities policy at the end of this meeting? Ms. Fabiano, remember you discussed, you discussed community members, the rabbis? Was it at the policy meeting?
Yes.
Because I had an input to give to that. I know Dr. Chanley's not here tonight, but I was at the shared services meeting with Dr. Chanley, our lawyer, Mrs. Kirby at that time, and I think the school facilities policy as it stands today, which is for a second reading today, should be tabled, because our shared services agreement was definitely modified after conversations with Ms. Lang and the mayor, that the, in, as part of the shared services agreement, they will handle security. So, I know that the shared services agreement, and Ms. Allen might remember this, that the language of the shared services agreement was modified to show that they will bear responsibility of the security. But like Ms. Ratner pointed out in the policy meeting, our school facilities policy says that anybody in group one does not have to pay for ex, you know, all the listed items, and security is one of them. So, I feel like there is definitely a gray area that we need your perspective on, Mr. Weiss, and we shouldn't be passing that policy through a second read today. So, I would, just because we've gone into a shared services agreement with the town recently, and we've had such an elaborate conversation, and Mr. Rito was part of that, where we said that we can provide security guards, and they assured us that they will train coaches and they will take the responsibility of making sure that our buildings are secure when they have basketball practices or what, whatever it may be, right? So, it, it's, it's not a matter of trust. It has to be a legal writing somewhere. So, while the shared services agreement says that, our school policy does not say that. So, there is, there's a, I think they need to be connected, yes.
Ms. Ratner?
I was just going to ask, because, you know, I brought it up to understand what you're saying, because we have already put information in there with like the additional fee for like after midnight and stuff like that, if we were to approve it as a second read tonight, but then bring it back in, in the future to policy, is that something that we could do instead? If you'd be amenable to that? I just, because I know we want to make sure we take care of that as well.
Because what you, your conversation in the policy meeting kind of completely put to light that there's a gap between, like there's a disconnect between two things, the shared service agreement and our facility use policy. So, I'm amenable to passing it tonight if in the very next policy meeting, you're going to bring it up and say, let's fix this gap, because there's a disconnect between two things here.
This is policy 7510.
All I can say is that the administration that was at the policy meeting didn't inform the committee about the shared services agreement.
Right.
We had no way of knowing. It should have been from the administration.
It should have been, you're right. It should have been. It was a miss, but right now that I, it just came to me that day as you were talking, and Dr. Chanley was thinking about, about the people who were part of that conversation, and I remember it as day and night what happened that night, because we, we were really pushing back as school administration that we cannot afford to pay for security. So, this was a very elaborate discussion that day, Ms. Allen would remember, and they assured us that we understand the liabilities, and we assure you that we will do better. Because in the past, the coaches have allowed anybody to come in from the doors. They weren't really careful. So, it, and that language was kind of incorporated into the shared service agreement, but you're right, we missed a step. The next step should have been policy, and now that we have that for, you know, approval, I feel like this is our opportunity to, I don't think it'll hurt if we push this by one more meeting. I don't know what's the pressing change on that today, but if we cannot, then we just bring it back, whatever, so.
The shared services agreements, is that, is that only for security? What about custodians and the other costs related to keeping the buildings open?
Okay, but would you be able to bring it back in the next month for discussion?
Policy, the policy?
Yeah.
I mean, sure.
Yeah, then, then I'm fine.
Mr. Pirro?
The only thing I see is that, that tier one, a lot of times, is the PTAs, the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, and it's always been a practice of the district when needed that the district provided security. Where with the township shared service agreement, the district, the, the town holds their own separate insurance, where the Boy Scouts and then more Girl Scouts may have their insurance, but it's still on, on our, our school use. So, I think that's the little bit of a disconnect, is that the town assumes all responsibility if something happens in a school, and that's why, and plus, I'm sure Mr. Selby will tell you that there is no way that they would be able to cover the town events.
You bring up a very good point.
But I know that I just wouldn't want it to affect the little kids and stuff that we allow to use the school, like I think that it's two separate things to me, the township and school functions.
Right, so, we should probably delineate that and say, i-if we do have this discussion, Ms. Alvarez, in policy, we probably will need to kind of drill down to, this is the rec. department, which is the town share services, right? And this is PTA, this is Boy Scouts, this is Girl Scout. How are we handling security for each one of these? And, and then put that in, into the regulations, like we, I don't think we have a choice here, but you're right, they're, they're all hand, they're all different baskets, and we should be thinking about it all.
It sounds like before the next policy meeting, then, Mr. Weiss, you should probably get a copy of the shared services agreement so that you can see it and as it relates to the policy.
Sure, and, and I'm happy to review any policy, any regulation that the board wants me to review. Lately, I've been doing a lot of facilities use policies, understanding that there are different organizations that have relationships and all of that, but my, just listening to the kind of higher-level topic here, there is the ability to make the policy say that unless otherwise agreed to in a facilities use agreement, the default position is X. That way, it would cover you for your shared services agreements, which would be different, that will have it spelled out, and also for your non-shared services folks, it would, it would cover them the same way that they're currently covered. So, there's all different ways that we can do it, and I'm happy to help in any way that I can.
You just gave the solution in a sentence.
Right, I was going to ask if we can modify the policy.
I was going to say, so can we just modify the policy, policy 7510? Am I correct?
That's correct, unless we want Dr. Chanley, who was part of shared services, to, to weigh on that, just because she's not here tonight. Dr. Lehman, I don't know if you, and Ms. Allen, I know you guys were at that meeting. And I also, the other thing that I did just want to ensure is in writing, I don't know if we, if we need this for sure, Mr. Weiss, is if we are stating that we are providing security and, you know, custodial for these other groups, I mean, listen, I'm a Girl Scout troop leader, I'm, I'm PTA voluntarily, so I absolutely agree with Mr. Pirro, like I don't want to see any of that affected, but I just want to know, like, in the event that these groups are there without those, like, is the liability falling on the district if something happens? I know these groups usually have their own insurance, but that's a little more depth than just that one line of the shared services part of it.
Yeah, make no mistake, I, I didn't mean that I have the silver bullet and just by whispering these words, we're going to be covered. There's, there's a lot of twists and turns and variables to be considered when you're, when you're making a policy, so that you can have the appropriate carve-outs to address some of the issues that you've addressed. You know, all I can say is generally speaking, all groups that use our buildings should have certificate of insurance that names us as an additional insured. There are going to be times where that's not possible, but the default position should always be, to the greatest extent possible, we're covering our exposure to liability wherever and whenever we can.
Right, but so just for clarification, if the district says they're going to provide it, are we void of liability then if something happens if they have insurance? That would, that would be my question.
So, the way that the insurance typically works is that one insurance policy would be designated as primary, if you will. Typically, we have the facilities users designated as, as primary, but if we're indicating that we're going to take care of certain services, i.e. security, it's on us to ensure the security at that point, and, you know, if your question is, does that expose us to liability in having that position, the answer is yes, it does.
Are there any other questions? So, I guess it's a matter of, do we want to move forward with the policy as it is tonight and then bring it back to the policy for discussion next month? Or?
Are you making a motion?
Well, no.
We don't have to make a motion for that.
Just asking. Well, we would have to make a motion to table it if that was the case, but.
Is it a first read?
Second.
Okay, okay. Ms. Bora?
Other committees?
Yes.
I have two meetings to report for. Finance and Shared Services Committee Minutes meeting was held August 14, 2024. The committee reviewed the bill list, which at the time of the meeting was approximately $9.5 million, with an addendum expected closer to the public board meeting. I think tonight the addendum is for another $4.5 million. For the benefit of the public, it was noted that we received the final bill for the April 2024 election from the county for $74,000, which along with the previous bill of $8,000 from the town, put the overall cost of the election to approximately $82,000, which the Board of Education is going to fund. The attorney in voice for the month, for Ju, month of June for Porzio and July for the Bush Law Group were then reviewed. Next item on the agenda was an exciting update on the GOB deal sale of our six buses by Ms. Allen. She shared that we sold all the buses for a handsome amount of $301,600. We got a lot of interest on these, and another school district ended up purchasing these from us. The original cost of these buses were, was about $548,000, and with the sale, we recouped $301,000, making the cost $246,000 for six buses, which is about $41,000 for each bus that we used for eight years. So, kudos to our administrators for doing that. Last item on the agenda was district legal cost overview. To address public and board concerns about the state of our legal cost in the recent years, the business office compiled a report that summarizes the legal cost over the last 11 years. Ms. Allen presented this report to the committee, and post the meeting, a redacted version of the same report was posted for the general public on board docs in the finance committee agenda for the month of August. I urge the members of the public to take a look at it. The report showed the various buckets of our legal cost, which is general counsel fees, bound counsel fees, insurance-assigned deductibles for all ethics and other lawsuits. It gave a great snapshot of the comparison of year over year of these buckets. An additional report detailed the various aspects of the legal fees for the general counsel for the last five years and how they have varied. Lastly, the report had a section that shares the data of legal fees per pupil, which is a standard metric, specifically for Monroe Township in the last decade, and how we rank with, in comparison to other districts that are also K through 12 and over 3,500 students in size. Notable observations from this report by the committee were that the legal cost for the district for the last school year, 2023, 2024, is the lowest we have had since the year 2014, 2015, which is the year that we transitioned from Willans Legal Firm to an in-house counsel. Last year, the cost was $230,000, and in 2015, it was $225,000. Legal fees per pupil has also stayed very consistent for Monroe over the last decade, and so has our ranking as compared to other districts. Please see the meeting recording for detailed discussion, and this concludes the finance update. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Pirro?
I would just like to bring up a point. We spent $82,000 to run an election last year. I think that going forward, we are one of the few districts that actually got more money this year than lost money. So, I would like to make a motion that we move the election back to November so we don't waste any more taxpayer money on separate elections. I think that that's important. I think that we need to be very more fiduciary in our spending and how we, we do it, and I just think that it's important that any money we could save for children, we put towards the kids instead of moving it in another direction. I mean, we're, there's many districts, take East Brunswick, they lost $8 million. I haven't seen them change their election yet to April. They're still in November. So, I think that we need to move the election back to November, and I like to make that motion.
Okay.
Can I second it, or is it something that needs to make a motion?
Do we make, is it a motion, or?
He made a motion.
I know we moved, yeah, so we, so it has to be seconded.
I'll second it.
And then?
Discussion.
Discussion, so let's discuss that. Mr. Tufano?
The fact remains that if we didn't move the election to when we did, we wouldn't be able to go out to the public and ask to go over cap. If we didn't ask to go over cap, we would have had a lot of programs to cancel this year, so changing the election is just, in my opinion, a spiteful move and not productive for the community.
Ms. Ratner?
So, I think that, I, I agree with moving the election back to November, because with the passage of S. 2837, now we can have a special election in, it's January, March, September, or December. in, it's January, March, September, or December for the following year. So, no longer is our election tied into the budget. However, I think that the right way to do this would be to have a discussion in the committee next month, and then bring it back to the board for discussion. So, I would like to make a motion to table, can I make a motion to table?
Yeah, that's one of the only motions that you can actually make while there's a pending motion, so yes.
I'll second that.
I'll second that, so you did already.
And have this vote next month.
But I, can I still discuss this?
Well, Ms. Ratner made a motion to table, so we need to have a vote on the motion to table. So, you're voting to table the motion to move the election?
Is there a discussion, questions discussion, on the motion to table?
Yes, any questions?
I, I can just reiterate what Ms. Ratner said. We have the, the district administration working overtime to present a budget philosophy far ahead of time. The cost of this election, I would like to say, is the cost of one full-time physician in this district. And at this point, the point, the, the driver of this conversation is that we didn't get any cuts, but the driver of this conversation should be that we are owed a lot of money by the state that we haven't gotten, that we've been fighting for the last two decades. Other towns have been getting that money, they stopped getting that money for two years, and they went through so many cuts. So we've, we've survived with far less money, and we want to still continue to be public fiduciaries and spend our money well, but not at the cost of taking away quality education from our children. So if not having this, and I would, I would like to ask Ms. Ratner this, so is it, has it been passed?
So, it's passed both house, it's passed both houses. It has not been signed by the governor yet, but usually if it's passed in both houses, it's that matter.
Again, another reason for us to wait before we go through the motion.
Right, but the, the reality is, I remember we had this discussion, and we saw Robbinsville had actually done this this year anyway, so I'm not actually sure where they were different from this legislation. But I think that the budget discussion, it, it's now honestly separate from, from this question, right? I think just that we can ask the administration to do what they can so that we don't go above cap. Next month, we can have this discussion, move the election to November so we know there's no cost and hope that we don't have to go over cap. But in the event that we do, we still have that option.
And I'm not disagreeing to that, I just say, why are we jumping the gun? When we're already in the process, we don't have to decide, we're not paying $82,000 today. We will pay that next year in the summer if we have the election in April. So can we wait a few months, let's go through the process, let's see what it is? Let that thing become a law so that we know we are completely covered. We got, we really got challenged by the law last minute last year. So we don't know which way this is going till it passes as a law. What's the rush to do this today? Just because we got a bill this year in, in August for April? We just need to make a motion and, and cut out all of our chances for quality education in case we need one? Let's go through the deliberation.
I disagree, I think that's a little true, we're not cutting out all the chances at all because their legislation has passed, it just has to be signed. So, we're still able to go fo- we're still able to go forward with the second question at other opportunities like what we did with the referendum, but we're not, but we're just moving the Board of Education election.
We won't be able to start the school year, we may not be able to renew some people because we don't have the budget. You don't know if the question in November is gonna pass. Can I, can I just finish the sentence? Yes, you can put a question in November, right? But your budget passes in April.
This isn't about putting a question in November, you don't have to put a question in November.
No, you don't have to.
You can put a question in September, April, March, December.
No, but if you put a question in April, we pay for it.
Well, same thing, great.
Right, so why are we changing? Oh, because we don't want to have a school election in April?
We don't need to have a school election in April.
Right, so if you're already paying for it, the cost is not, it's not double or less, but if we?
We don't know if we need it or not.
Exactly, we would know by November. We're going through the budget philosophy, so why not wait till November?
We can't go after the taxpayer every year for more and more money.
I agree, I agree.
When we're a district that gets more, more, not our fair share, but more than we got the year before.
Mr. Piro, I'm not disagreeing.
So I think that the, the play on words here is, like Ms. Fabiano said, we have an election, general election. Then if we need a special question, then we have all these months to do it.
I am not disagreeing.
I don't understand what the grandstanding is.
But it can be a recommendation next month.
You're not doing grandstanding, I am saying, why are we rushing into something when we don't have to? We were told by the lawyers, we don't need to decide anything for the April election till February, right? So now, when the, when the entire administration is lining up the budget philosophy so we can all deliberate, I am not, I am just saying that when, in May, we have to renew our staff, and we don't have the budget allocated to it, we cannot renew our staff. So if you're going to go for a question in May or April and move the election to November, we are still paying two times, whether you take it out of the right pocket of the taxpayer or the left pocket. It's the taxpayer's money.
We only pay once, just like we do now.
No, so if we go to the question, like you just said, if we don't have the money, we can go to the question anytime. So if we are going to go to a question, right? Before 2025, 2026 school year starts, right? Listen, I am, this is all hypothetical right now. I am not saying we have to go for a question. I am only saying, at the end of the day, we need to do right for student success. We have the time to wait and then decide. Deciding today is not gonna save us the $80,000 that we may spend in April or November next year. But deciding in November, we will be deciding with all the information laid out in front of us. I am not here to spend taxpayers' money unnecessarily for a good quality education.
Well, then, we wouldn't, but if we needed to, then we would do the question. But if we don't, why not do like every other district and leave the election in November?
Yes, we can decide that in November.
And then if we need to decide it, we decide it later.
Ms. Payne had her hand up, Ms. Payne?
I wanted to, I have to agree with Mr. Piro. And also, I think it would give Ms. Allen some more time to get the numbers that she needs to make the proper adjustments to our budget, above or below, and where we need to make adjustments as a board, where we can find out. And I know that the New Jersey School Board's December meeting is going to have superintendent, a BA, and a board member there to discuss what a board has the ability to do with regards to a budget. Right now, I'm, last year, I knew nothing. As soon as I walked out of a closed session, I was given a form that there was a second question. I knew nothing about it, so I voted no because I didn't like the process. But now we need to know, we will need to know, or we will be told, how the process works, and then we can make a good decision about our budget. And it gives Ms. Allen more time to properly adjust our budget the way it should be. But I think that's mine.
I think this is important to note that if moving, moving the election back to November is essentially separating the board election and the budget question. They become two separate things. So, you'll have your board election in November, standard, which will not cost us any money because it's part of a general election.
Right.
But then you have your budget question, if, if we need one, that can be put out at various other months throughout the year, that we would pay for.
Right, but Ms. Payne, like, what you actually just said was actually the reason I made the motion to, to table. Because I didn't like that we had a motion, a resolution, that was given to us that day. But here we are now, and I think it would be hypocritical for us to say that we were upset when that happened then, but then have this happen tonight. We're a board of committees, the recommendation should come from a committee. I, I know we were discussing it in LACE, and then we said it would be discussed in Finance. I don't believe it came up in the Finance Committee meeting. And I would like for it to just be discussed there, recommended there, and then handled the correct way, just like we were upset about happening last year.
Thank you, Ms. Ratner.
I think the difference between the Finance, what we were talking about, Gail, with the budget question, is we didn't know what was part of the budget question until we went into that, until we came out of that meeting.
Right.
I feel like this is different because we know what this is. We're just asking to move the board election back to November. We know that that will then extend, yay, everybody's terms until, like, the three of us, our terms until January of 2026, Ms. Ratner, Mr. Tufano, and?
No, no, Ms. Alvarez.
Me, myself.
I'm with you.
Until, sorry, until June, January of 2020.
We are just, we're April 25, and they're April 26 right now.
No, 25, 26, and 27, it'll be January of the, that's different.
Listen, I've been most vocal about moving it, right? Like, I, I get it, we save money. I just don't know why we can't do this the, the proper way, go through the process, as Ms. Payne said.
Right, and, and Ms. Ratner, if I can, Ms. Fabiano, what you just said, that yes, now we don't need the, you know, we can do it anytime, based on the legislation. But anytime we do it, it will cost us money, right? So if we, if that possibility still exists, can we just go through the process, right? We, we're not, you know that we don't have to decide anything till February for the April election. And we will decide way sooner because we are starting with the budget philosophy in September. I don't understand the urgency, just because I said in Finance that, and I pointed it out in public transparency, that it costs us $82,000. Not for you to hit a button, all right, let's stop this right now, we'll never ever do this again.
Nothing to do about it.
We're going in the, we're going through the process. Just go through the process. Like, it's, it's, I, I get the impulse and I get the passion, believe me, I'm just as passionate as you are. But we started a process, and we started this back in June when we asked the business office that this year we want to do it early so the board members all know what is at stake, what they want to go, what they want to cut, and what they don't want to cut, and which is what is going to start happening starting September, maybe.
I know, I don't think we're changing the budget process, the budget process is still gonna remain the same. And if we need to go out for a second question, then we go out for the question in March.
Ms. Fabiano, but by passing that motion, we're changing the flexibility we have for no reason. Like, there's no advantage of doing it today than doing it three months later. What is the advantage of passing this motion today versus three months later? Public trust? Public is looking at us work. There is a lot of members in the public who will distrust us for taking the action today. As many as they are, that will trust us more. So we have both sides of the public here because, honestly, end of the day, all of our goals are student success as public fiduciaries. So, if it's not going to change the needle anyway, from a financial point, can we wait and deliberate through due process?
So we have, we have the motion to table, so let's, let's vote on the motion to table this. Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
No.
Ms. Bora?
So I am voting?
To table.
To table, so if I say yes, it'll get tabled, right?
Well, you're voting to table it.
If you are in favor of tabling, vote yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Ms. Payne?
No.
Mr. Piro?
No.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
No.
Ms. Fabiano?
No.
So, you, um, no, the answer is B.
What about Dr. Peck?
Oh, Dr. Peck.
Ms. Scott voted, but I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, does Jamesburg, does Dr. Peck vote on that?
I'd have to look at your bylaws to see what.
Last time the Jamesburg rep did, Michelle did vote on this previously.
I would imagine, I'm only imagining here, but I would imagine that she does vote since it's a matter of the whole board.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd have to see the.
I'd like to abstain, though.
She wants to abstain.
So, it is not tabled then?
Okay, so the motion is not tabled, so now we have to vote on the motion to?
Well, well, just before we do that, we were in questions discussion on the main motion when Ms. Ratner made the motion to table. So we will now continue with questions discussion on the main motion.
To move forward.
To, to change the date of the election to November.
Is there any further discussion?
I just want to clarify, it would be November 2025, not November 2024.
Correct, November 2025. And then the outcome of that election, those people, whoever wins, would be installed at reorganization, which would be January of 2026.
May I ask a, a point of clarification? If there is a motion that does not pass, can that motion be reconsidered in, in the future?
Absolutely, someone can just make, I mean, you could actually, as silly as it sounds, you could just keep making the same motion.
That could be fun.
But yeah, you can, you're not, you're not precluded just by virtue of the fact that it was voted on tonight and did not pass.
So, if this, I have a question. So this, if this passes, our elections will move to November 2025. But the budget process that is going on, at the end of that, we can, as a board, say, we're gonna have a shortfall, we're gonna have an election in April with a ballot question, and still go out, go out and pay $82,000. All it does is extend some board members' terms.
It's just giving us a sec, it's giving you the option to go out for a second question.
Yeah, you'd, you'd be able to go out for a second question. One thing, though, that everybody needs to know, once the board moves it to November, if the board moves it to November, the board then must continue to have it in November for the next four years. So it's not something that you can ping pong back and forth. There is teeth to it in that you're, you are going to be, for lack of a better term, living with it for four years.
So we just moved it to April this year, that doesn't, that four-year rule doesn't apply right now?
Under the statute, it's my recollection that it would apply only if you're moving it to November, and it's that November that holds.
May I just ask one more quick point in regards to judging? Because I know there's been confusion at, at other points. An abstention, does that count as a, a no vote? Is there a certain number of votes we need in the affirmative?
You, you will need a certain number of votes in the affirmative in order for it to pass. An abstention does not count, it's neither a yes or, or no.
And just, just for the clarification for the public, do we need the majority of the people here? So it would be six people in order, six yes votes in order for it to?
Yes.
Move forward.
It's a majority of the full board when all seats are seated, when all people are seated.
Can I make some comments?
Sure.
So, just from a district perspective, like Ms. Bora has said, we do have a process in place, and it's budget-related, which I understand the intent right now is to make, to potentially separate the two with pending legislation that would allow for potentially what we would need in terms of recouping an additional overcap expenditure through this pending legislation. Knowing what we went through last year, some of the things that were on the table, the difficulty of reaching our target goal, you know, we always look to run the most efficient district in terms of expenditures, in terms of staffing, you know, we move staff around, we keep a very close eye on class sizes and things. And I just feel at this point, there's a lot of variables out there, and if, if you're not pressed for time, we are heading in the direction of next month having a very preliminary snapshot that will give you a glimpse of what we're looking at. But also, and it just could be the conservative side of me, I don't believe something until it actually happens. And that's, you know, whether it passed both, both sides of the legislature, that's fine. Until it's signed, it's a risk you take, all of us take with anything, expecting something to happen. And then it may or may not happen, or it may happen in a much belabored timeframe than expected, which has unintended consequences and things. So, it, it would be my recommendation to delay this decision until you have certainty, things are in place in terms of what you're looking for. It also gives us time to share more information with you in terms of a completely transparent process. Obviously, what we're gonna share with you in September is much broader, much more general, than every month we move closer towards the end of the school year as numbers get more, as numbers get finalized, enrollments settle down and actualize, state aid gets figured out what it's gonna look like next year. As we talked about, you know, S. 2 is fully funded. We're sitting at what the state perceives us as to be fully funded. Does that mean we maintain our funding? Does that mean we lose funding next year? Is it purely enrollment-related? There's a lot of variables involved, a lot of questions we have. But my recommendation would be to, and not that, you know, I'm a voting member of the board, but from a dis- district perspective, I would wait till things are in place so we have the options that we potentially may need to maintain the expected level of education that we have in this township.
Mr. Zeichner?
Madam President, can we have the motion read, please? This motion?
Yeah, so we have the motion, we have the motion to move forward with moving the.
Okay, the date, is, is the date included in that motion that was made? I want to make sure that motion has the date that we're saying, we're saying as of January, as of November 2025. Is that correct?
Yes, there is a resolution. So I had a fear feeling that this was going to come up today, and I did speak with Mr. Weiss earlier today, hours before the meeting. So we do have a resolution here.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the date was.
Yes, there will be dates and everything specified in the resolution to move it forward.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, election day next year is November fourth.
November fourth, thank you.
Ms. Bora?
Ms. Fabiano, did you just say that you had a feeling this was going to happen and you have a resolution in place?
I don't have it in place, but I did speak with Mr. Weiss earlier today. It was mentioned to me that this would be brought up, and I did ask.
I am shocked, but thank you for sharing that, and I would like to urge all board members to please listen to what Dr. Lehman said, and Dr. Lehman, thank you for articulating it way better than my passionate self could. We're not losing any pennies off the taxpayer by waiting a couple months. Let's all not rush into a decision. We all have the same due diligence to the community, and the community is not just taxpayers. Their students, it's education, it's the future of our town. If we can wait a couple months, it's not going to cost us money. Can we please not rush into grandstanding to fulfill election promises and come up ready with resolutions for something that the rest of us are completely blindsided, sided by, when we've been trying to work towards a budgets philosophy meeting in September? I am beyond appalled today at what is happening. I am sorry.
Ms. Al, not to, to put you on the spy, but would it be your recommendation from the business office to, to wait, to, do you, I guess, what are your thoughts?
I, I don't.
If, you don't have to, I'm just curious what, because I guess if, the reality is it's separate between budget and election anyway.
Well, exactly, they are two separate things at this point. So we do have a motion on the table, on the floor, to vote on moving the election back to November, so we need to have a roll call on that motion.
So yes is in the affirmative, correct?
If we vote yes, it'll, it's a motion to move the election back to November, correct?
Starting in November of twenty-five, right.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
No.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Abstain.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Abstain.
Ms. Sharma?
Abstain.
Mr. Tifano?
No.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
So motion does not, because we do not have six.
I counted five.
Right.
Affirmative.
Five affirmative, so it does not.
Wait, doesn't it need six votes to pass?
Yes.
We got six, yes.
It did not pass. The motion did not pass.
Did not pass, thank God.
Okay, so are there any other questions or comments about the finance report?
I have committee report.
Um, and Ms. Bora also has questions, so Ms. DePain?
Yeah, mine's real, mine's real small. The Citizens Advisory Committee met on Tuesday, August thirteenth, and, um, in attendance were Mr. Moraldo, Ms. Fabiano, Ms. Ratner, Ms. Alvarez, I was on virtually, and Dr. Chanley. It was just, three or four things were mentioned. I was asked Mr. Moraldo if he would volunteer to put a sign-in sheet together when the committee meets in October. He agreed. He was kind of voluntold, but he was very nice to agree. Also, we wanted to talk about how the meetings will be run, and I know Dr. Lehman was missing. He was, took a very well-needed vacation, and we will get more information out of him with the strategic plan to be discussed with the people that are picked for this committee. And actually, that's why I put Dr. Lehman to present the committee when chosen, the strategic plan and other appropriate information needed for the members to be well-informed about the assignments of the committee. And the CAC committee meetings have changed. They will now be held on Tuesdays, I guess, at the third Tuesdays of the month from seven to eight. And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Any questions? Or? Ms. DePain? Ms. Bora?
Yeah, I just had, I've been listening to it every month, and I appreciate, because you guys are starting from scratch, so there's a lot of, you know, variables out there, and I appreciate the work that the committee is doing, but just this time, listening to the committee meeting, something came out to me, and I know that you guys are probably looking at other districts and, or, you know, other formats of this, but the only thing that I, I did not hear about in those discussions so far, that I would recommend or suggest is when the letter goes out to let these people know that they're part of the committee, maybe a little guy, all of us board members, we go through the board member training, and so we understand our roles as to only interacting through Dr. Chanley, the superintendent, and we don't directly interact with other, you know, district members. So if we could kind of give them some sort of a guideline that all of their interaction needs to happen through the committee chair, and there should not be any, you know, because they're members of the public, they've not gone through the training we've gone through, so just to keep the sanity of the relationship, you know, between the community members and the administration.
It was discussed.
And make sure, make sure they don't cross any lines and.
Right.
Doesn't become awkward for anybody.
Totally understandable, and, and Dr. Lehman had brought that up, I think, the month before.
Okay.
That, yes, that we would do that, and if we were going to put assignments out, have them, we, we have a lot of different things, but it's so, it's so much in limbo.
I can understand the complexity till it really comes together.
So, yes, we're trying to get it together as fast as we can. Thank you for that, though, I appreciate it.
Of course, of course.
Any other questions for Mr. DePain? Ms. Ratner?
Just a quick clarification. As far as the application, I know we had discussed it going out, I guess, Dr. Lehman, with the rollout of the new website, will there be any issues with doing that?
No. I, I think whatever we're going to put in place, in anything we're merging with the new website, it's taking what we have and just, so think of like reformatting a document, you know, when you, when you, you know, take a Word document and turn something else, that's what we're going through with the website. So whatever we're doing with this committee in terms of communications will fit seamlessly with the, the new website.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Bora.
Thank you. The curriculum committee update, this is for the August thirteenth meeting, and I apologize this long, like every curriculum committee. Starting next month, the meeting is going to be one and a half hours long, so these minutes will also be longer. The agenda for the August meeting consisted of eighteen curriculum documents that were discussed and are on the agenda for approval tonight. Most of the existing curriculum documents were updated to reflect the twenty-twenty New Jersey State Learning Standards. Dr. Rozell discussed world languages documents covering grade seven Spanish, Spanish II, Spanish III, and, and Spanish IV, and also honors French. She shared information on seal of bilinguism and how we support alternate pathways for it, allowing for more languages than just Spanish, French, Italian, and Latin. She then discussed a newly established advanced grades, sixth ELA, grade six advanced ELA, which has gone through one year cycle last year. Next on the agenda was a sixth grade course, was a new sixth grade course, life literacy and key skills. This was presented by Mr. Moraldo, who shared that this course was temporarily referred to as CHAMP, but the administration has decided to go with this new name, which is better aligned with the revised NJSL nine-point-one and nine-point-four standards, which is titled Career Readiness, Life Literacies, and Key Skills. These standards are mandatory. While many aspects of these standards are incorporated in multiple courses through high school, this sixth grade dedicated program would be an excellent addition to our curriculum. This document was very detailed, there were good discussions, and the document was extremely well-received by the committee. Next, Ms. Rusp presented a few science document, documents, namely honors molecular research, AP Physics II, AP Biology, and AP Environmental Science, all updated to reflect the twenty-twenty New Jersey State Learning Standards. She highlighted the excellent opportunities our students are awarded when they take these high-level, uh, high, high-level courses and science. She then shared the document for seventh grade social studies and civics. This is a new and updated, and has been updated to integrate the various aspects of civics curriculum into the ancient Greece, ancient Rome, Middle Ages, and Renaissance portion of the social studies curriculum for seventh grade. She then shared a new textbook for adoption, which is grant-funded for the AP African-American Studies Program. Next on the agenda was Mr. Snyder, who presented documents for performing arts, fine arts, and also PE. We reviewed symphonic band curriculum, which will have eighty-four students enrolled this year, which is phenomenal. The Monroe Township High School symphonic band achieved a gold rating last year, which is a matter of pride. He then shared details of the graphic design three, studio art one, ceramics and sculpture, and grade two art documents. Last but not the least, he presented the Falcon Pals Program. This is a Special Olympics NJ Unified Championship School Model Program that we take a lot of pride in. Next, we discuss renewals, and notable amongst those are, as shared by Dr. Lehman, was the SCORE program, which, SCORE platform, which we will be transitioning to this year in place of Navions. In the last meeting, we renewed enough licenses for Navions to cover our senior class, who are already in the middle of college app processes, and so the administration did not want to disrupt their process. Rest of high school will start using SCORE that comes highly recommended by Dr. Kritali. The district will also see a cost benefit due to this transition. Dr. Lehman also discussed two professional development opportunities by Dr. Recumini in maths and ELA for our interventionists. This will be one-on-one feedback model of training. Next on the agenda was an update on the Overhauled MTSD Gifted and Talented Program. Mr. Moraldo shared the work that has been done across various areas of our, to give our students a variety of opportunities. He gave a detailed handout of programs currently being offered that listed criteria of eligibility as well. This information is currently on our website, and there was an ask made by the committee to include this in the back-to-school night communications by building principal. Lastly, he recapped the successful completion of the extended school year and shared that the enrichment summer programs are in their home stretch. The pilot SAT prep program, which was approved in the last month's meeting, also kicked off a day before the committee meeting. That concludes our date. Any questions?
Questions or comments for curriculum? Okay, seeing none, we are going to go to the next item on our agenda, which is the public forum for agenda items only. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak, you have four minutes. Please come up and state your name and municipality for the record.
I live in Monroe Township. I have a question about item BU number three, which involves hiring a teacher of study skills at a cost of fifty-three thousand dollars as a resignation replacement. It's on page thirty of the agenda. Why are we hiring a teacher just to teach study skills when the teaching of study skills can be incorporated into all the regular content areas like math, science, social studies, et cetera? Upon review of the previous agenda, I didn't see any resignations of teachers of study skills, so how can this be a replacement of a resignation? This seems to be like a new position. When was the job description of this position approved by the board? I don't recall seeing a job description for a teacher of study skills getting approved by the board beforehand, so I was just wondering for an explanation for this position in answer to my questions.
Do you, Dr. Lehman?
So that position is, the term study skills, it aligns with our position control rosters as well as connects with our state reporting, so that would just be a general teacher described, job description. We don't have a job description for ELA teacher, math teacher, it's just a teacher of, a general teacher job description, so that's why you don't see study skills. That position specifically is, that teacher will be working in the new career life skills course. So it's a resignation, retirement resignation position, because the position, whether it was a science teacher, a social studies teacher previously, that position in our position control roster is not a new staff member to the district. It was transferred over on paper to be filled with this teacher. I don't know if that helps you understand. It's, it's an existing position, we're not hiring a new teacher into the building in terms of adding a new position. It's a retirement. That position is not needed in its previous role. We are reclassifying, renaming it, and that teacher will be teaching a different course. And that's the license slash title that we use when we report to the state.
Okay, so you're saying the job description for this career readiness, life literacy class doesn't, the job description doesn't need to be approved by the board, is what you're saying?
It's a teacher position. So teachers have a generic job description by the board.
Okay.
It's not every individual teacher that teaches an individual subject doesn't have an individual job description. So this is a teacher in the district, so we're bringing on a teacher. In terms of its specific assignment role, that's those roles you see connected to our HR department, which connects to the state in terms of, and payroll connects all the dots. So we, when we're audited and when we're monitored by the state, we, we have a position control roster that lines up with the actual physical teachers that are in the building.
Okay, thank you.
So that's why you see teachers, you know, teacher of third grade in, in a specific elementary school, that all sinks through our backend systems, so when we, we monitor staffing expenditures, you know, we can track it that way.
Yeah, I just thought for the middle school level, I usually see teacher of social studies or math or science, so that's why I was surprised to see this.
Right.
As a middle school. It wasn't clear what, what this was for.
Yep, yep. Thank you for the question.
All right.
Good evening.
My name is Dominic Torito. I don't live in town, but my children go to school here. I, in response to the motion to elect and change the election, I work for the government. I know that it moves at a snail's pace, and I think that trying to all of a sudden be proactive to save eighty-two thousand dollars when really you're just extending the terms of your colleagues under that guise is what it is. Uh, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Good evening.
Good evening. Charminio nine Nathaniel Street. On page three of forty, the approval of the minutes, was there a correction made to this? Because in my agenda, it says closed session meetings, August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Yes, the date, the date is wrong there. I did say that it should be July thirty-first.
Okay, so these should all, I'm sorry, I came in a little later.
That's okay, they should be, it should say July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four for both.
Okay, when they were voted on.
Yes.
It was corrected.
Yes.
At the time of the vote.
Well, honestly, I, I don't remember.
When you voted on the, just a few hours ago?
Yeah, yeah, no. I think you've said it, but we didn't make them. I said, uh, July, and then you changed it, and you said it's July thirty.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, it will be corrected, the minutes will be corrected. Okay, and on the, and again, I apologize, I was not here when you came out of closed session the first time. So your new system, what you put X's on two of forty, page two of forty, you put X's where the discussion's going to be in closed session, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the first X matters concerning protection of the safety or property of the public, pending or anticipated litigation, and matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. Was there any tack, uh, action taken on that when you came out of closed session?
No.
Can there, it, was it, was litigation discovered? Because you have a few things here. Anticipate, uh, protection, the safety or, or property, and then pending litigation and matters covered. So there's like four things. Can you be a little bit more specific? Is there any litigation discussed on, in closed session?
Yes.
Okay. And is it pub, is the litigation, now some litigation is private if it's student litigation.
It's, um, the litigation that was discussed in executive session this evening relates to the matter of Arminio versus the Monroe Township Board of Education. There was also, just trying to think, there was no other litigation discussed in closed this evening. As far as the other items that you read, I'm just, you know, when I, when I heard them, I was thinking to myself, yep, we did that, yep, we did that, so I don't, I don't have any.
I would ask that going forward, again, since, since it, since that litigation is public, it's in the courts and it's public, I mean, you, if you, when you do the minutes of that meeting, that you actually say that was discussed?
I don't have a, a problem with saying that, that that was discussed, it's an ongoing case, but to the extent that the board in the future is going to seek my advice on potential litigation, that, that won't be listed in the minutes with, with a name, only because that's, giving the name in and of itself may be problematic.
Problematic for you?
Yeah.
Well, if, if.
But I understand your concern.
If I have anything to say about it, since it's my.
I, I understand your concern.
You can publicize.
We do need to balance, you know, the public's right to know with the, the board's confidentiality.
We do need to balance, you know, the public's right to know with the board's confidentiality.
Especially since people can go to E-courts and find the litigation.
Absolutely, but what they can't go to E-courts and find out is my recommendations to the board, and that's what's, that's what goes on in, in closed.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we are going to close the public forum. The next item on our agenda is the assistant superintendent's report, Dr. Lehman.
Do you mind if I do both? And we'll write into the superintendent's report? Okay.
So we're going nine and ten.
Yes, nine and ten. So I'll just start with, so on the agenda tonight, I just wanted to draw attention and thank the residents and organizations listed for their donations to the district. Among those donations are several instruments that will be utilized within our arts program here in the district. We actually had a last-minute, literally probably noon time today addition of two instruments that a resident donated, so they happened to be vacating the area quickly, and we wanted to make sure we could receive them and give the proper documentation to them. So thank you for your flexibility in that last-minute adjustment for those donations. We're making our way through August, and our fall sports teams and programs are already up and running in preparation for September. When you drive by the high school and, and all facilities, I'm sure you see practices going on and the lights are back on at night. Our high school's homecoming event is scheduled for September twenty-seventh. We look forward to continuing to celebrate our student athletes along with our learning community throughout the fall. Our athletic department is grateful and excited for our partnership with the MTHS Booster Club. Last spring, we had a tremendous car show, and we're looking to potentially make this an annual tradition. And then lastly, we're on schedule and working on pace to open the district, as we heard in the facilities update. You know, we're, we're wrapping up the cleaning of the buildings, we're wrapping up some of the construction projects we have, the roof replacements, we're planning for next summer's work already. We also have some vacancies we're looking to fill. Most of those are historically challenging positions to find and fill. If, if we get in a position, we do have Plan Bs and Plan Cs in place, but we are still reaching out and identifying very strong candidates. So, you know, we expect to see some of those candidates on a future board agenda for approval as well. And then lastly, like I said, the facilities are on track for cleaning, on track for opening this coming week, so next week. I'll drive through the, the buildings and take a look. I'll do a walk-through. I try to do that in the summers, just to get a feel, make sure we are good to go and get the visual inspection, so that's something I'll do probably Wednesday, Thursday, Friday next week. And if anything comes up, I'll certainly keep you in the loop. Any questions or, yes?
Just a quick question. I know you had mentioned the, the high school booster club. My oldest is just going into eighth grade now, so I'm just, I wanted to get information. Does the booster club work with all of the high school teams, including the ones that aren't, like, as well as the ones that aren't necessarily considered athletics, they're clubs, but they're athletic clubs? Or are there specific groups that it, it works with?
The high school booster club is open to working with any athletic club that is willing and interested in working with them. Some athletic teams have their own, you know, parent groups or organizations, Touchdown Club, for example, but they're open and interested in working with any, any student or any athletic organization. They do hold, you know, like a food license and things, so that benefits some of the smaller teams, you know, where there's maybe ten athletes, they wouldn't necessarily be able to get a gambling license to hold a raffle or something like that, or fifty-fifty, and that's where the booster club is a real benefit for them. So if you have a specific question about a, your son or daughter's, I guess, direct club experience, we certainly can, you know, I can get you in touch with Dr. Higgins, we can get you in touch with the booster club. Mr. Berendike is over here. He, he meets with them on a regular basis, and he can kind of connect the dots. Okay?
Hi, I noticed that usually we have enrollment numbers, but we don't have any for the schools. Is it because it's summer?
Yes, summertime, we, we pause that, and then we will put, publish that again, starting once we reopen schools.
Ms. Bora? Dr. Lehman, was the car show through the booster club?
Yeah, it was a partnership with the booster club, yes.
And what did we make through that event?
I don't have the exact number, but I know we have, and we're working collaboratively with them, to have an exciting event that will display and show some of the fruits of the labor. And it, the goal is for it to be a very exciting, surprising event.
Again, the same time this year?
It'll be, it'll be this fall.
Oh, it'll be fall?
Yeah, Mr. Berendike is working closely with the booster club. We're looking for the right, the right time. Yeah, it could be that we're, depending on the installation and depending on how the, the fruits of the, of the returns come in, then we.
You've got my hopes all high up.
We will have an event planned, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, Dr. Lehman, you're going to do the superintendent's report?
Absolutely. So it is recommended that the board approve the attached personal items for a ten-member vote, items A through AO. And just a note, I'm including the assistant superintendent's recommendation there as well. So this is A through AO.
Motion?
I have a question.
Second.
On page. Dr. Lehman. Page twelve, X, Y, and Z. Can you explain those to me? I'm not sure I understand why those teachers are being there for covering the high school in the morning. What, students come in early for something, or?
So in managing the traffic in the high school, what we've decided, and it's something that, and Mr. Piro can speak to this as well as experience years ago as well, all the students, all the staff arrive into the very narrow window of time. And historically, it backs up into the roads. So what we offered as a solution is parents within this timeframe can drop their students off a little bit earlier to get ahead of the traffic.
And if they're going to work or things like that?
Yeah, if they're going to work or if they just want to not wait for ten minutes on the road and deal with the traffic thing. So this has significantly increased our ability to get everyone to class on time. It's like going to any sporting event anywhere where you have a lot of people convening and converging at the same time. So that, this is all a safety piece, getting our students in and in the building without having to queue up in traffic.
And the same, the same with Z? That's after school.
So this is the testing center?
Yes.
So this is a system that the high school has in place, and these teachers rotate through. And what the teachers do is, when there are assignments to be made up, and this is specifically testing, in lieu of missing core instruction or, because the teachers are teaching in an eighty-four minute block. If, if they, students take an eighty-four minute test or a sixty-minute test, they're going to miss a large chunk of instruction. So this gives them a, a timely fashion to get tests taken, and it's, these are just basically supervise, you know, teachers that supervise it, and then we can get those teachers back the, the tests so they can score them, and then the students don't miss out on instruction moving forward.
Okay. Thank you very much for the explanation.
I don't, I don't care. So I just, I had a quick question regarding letter AM. It mentions non-certificated substitutes for avid.
Is it AM, she said?
Letter, is it, yeah, letter AM. There's certified and there's non-certificated, but the non-certificated ones say substitute avid tutor. I was just curious, because I know like our avid teachers go through a lot of training. Are these not teachers?
So these are, some of these are, actually, most of these are students. So we use our own students to tutor within the avid program, and it's just like our mentorship programs and things, it's an opportunity for our students to work and tutor and get paid through the district. Yep, and this is, we do this annually. Actually, all these timesheets run through my office after they go through the high school for approval. Some of these tutors will work at the middle school, and then in the middle school avid program as well.
I had a suggestion, Dr. Lehman, for item K. Two and three is, and I understand that one person's role is being shared by two, and this is for the SAT prep class. So it, it would have been simpler to just write three sessions for each one of them instead of writing that fifty percent, but still approving them for six sessions at fifty-five dollars an hour.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes. Mr. Piro?
Obstane on AO and AN, and yes to everything else.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So it is recommended that the board approve attached personnel items AP through BX. That's the nine-member vote.
Motion?
Second. Ms. Ratner?
Yeah, so item BV number seven, and I might have seen this in somewhere else, but specifically this one I just saw, it has a unified liaison for an instructional hourly rate of fifty-five dollars. I know a lot of times we usually see up to a certain amount of hours. Is that not the case for this?
Not the case for this position. Some, some months they don't meet outside of school hours, some months they meet a couple hours. It's a very minimal expenditure. It used to be paid for by the special education or the special Olympics grants we received. We approved everyone else as unified liaison last month. This is the last assignment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Allen?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It's recommended that the board approve the attached board action items A through S, ten-member vote.
Motion?
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question, I have a comment.
Ms. Alvarez?
Sure.
On the school calendar, it's just a comment, is there any way we can streamline it to fit it all on one page, one-sided versus flipping?
You know, that's, and, and I think that's an appropriate question as we merge into our new website, it has a tremendous calendar feature, so maybe there's something that we can better connect with. We certainly will have the calendar live and interactive on the new website, but maybe we can have a document that's a one-sided piece, we can look at it. And that, this does come, we generate the document out of our office, the calendar itself is, you know, lots of people are involved in, but my, my administrative assistant, she works on it, so we certainly can do that. My recommendation would just move forward with this right now, because we, I have seen districts that have it on one page. It's more of like a line but based piece, or they have small calendars, so we can play around with it, but I also want to see how we can potentially merge it into the new website.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Bora?
I have a few questions. So the first one is clarification, we are going ahead with the school facilities policy seven-five-one-zero, right? And we'll just bring it back to discussion, but for now, today we are passing it forward. For item F, the calendar change, I just wanted to say a quick note of acknowledgement and thank you to Dr. Lehman and Dr. Chanley. I know that the Muslim community has, has been very upset because the senior prom is on the day of a holiday, but you've been working collaboratively with them, and that has resulted in a slight change, slight peace offering. But I did wanted to thank you guys for listening to the community, working with them for, you know, a constructive approach to handling that situation. And my hope is that never again in the future will a senior prom be on the same day as a holiday. Item number K, Dr. Lehman, I do have a question. Who will receive, and let me just read what that is. It's, it's a ninety-minute virtual professional development session on Black history and API history over two days. So this is, I think, in collaboration with New York Historical Society. Who will be receiving this professional development?
So this is our, this is all funded by the grant that we received to implement this course.
Oh, the AP, African-American.
Yep, the AP, African-American Studies course.
It didn't say, did it say in parentheses, grant-funded or?
Uh, probably, it, it doesn't look like it does, but anything associated with that grant, with that course this year is one hundred percent funded by that grant, with the whole intent of the grant to, we're, we're purchasing textbooks with it, and we're also training the teacher. So this is teacher training for the, for that staff member.
Just the, just the who's getting it would have been enough, but it's grant-funded, so that's a cherry on the cake. Item number, item M, I think, it is a Savas Learning Company. Would you share who, I think these are consult, what is it used for?
So this is, we're in year two of our K-five literacy adoption, the My View Literacy. I'm sure you've heard us talk about that.
And that happens every year, or is that?
Nope, this is part of our onboarding for the new, the new, the new series. Last year was year one.
What we approved as a textbook?
Yep, so this is, we have trainers come in, work with teachers. It's usually groups of anywhere between fifteen and thirty teachers, and we'll target, whether it's, you know, ICR research from teachers, you know, different grade levels of teachers, and it's all driven off of the data we got last year during their initial implementation.
So when we signed up for that, we, that did not include this? This was an additional cost of training?
But this is a budgeted piece. As we roll out, this is a massive overhaul of our language arts program, probably one of the largest curriculum adoptions we could make in a district. This is part of our plan, implementation plan, is supporting the teachers, not just year one and onboarding it, but also the follow year.
So my next question was going to be, are we being proactive or reactive? But you're saying that this is a follow-up, like a refresher training?
Well, when, when you get a massive resource, you don't know what you don't know. So as you go through it, right, you learn it, you get comfortable, and now they can come even more prepared. Last year is, this is how you use it. This year is, now that you used it, here's a little more information, but what else do you have questions on? How else can we help you do this and implement it with fidelity?
Thank you very much. So we will be comfortable with it by year three, you think?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions?
Yep, just really quick. First, I just wanted to congratulate the district on getting the grants for the professional development for Dr. Ricomini. I might have said his name wrong, but, and then I also just wanted to briefly bring attention to letter S, which is the impact fee resolution. And I can bring this to the committee next month, but with agreement, I would love to also send this to the person who brought up this legislation in twenty-twenty-two at the legislative level and our legislators, to see if there's any changes to be done.
If I can, please, I'm sorry it wasn't in my notes, but thank you for pushing this forward. Thank you for adding this to the agenda.
It is a couple of years in the making, so glad to see that it's finally on paper. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recues on item G, I believe it is, which is an agreement for the band department, and recues on the professional development for Ms. Smith.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
It's recommended that the board approve the attached board action items T through AB, nine-member vote.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Okay, Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, to all, recues on items related to the learning tree on letter A.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, to all, recues on the field trip for Mr. Ratner, field trips for Mr. Ratner.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I think that concludes the superintendent's report.
Correct, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Dr. Lehman. Thank you, Ms. Dr. Lehman. Ms. Allen, the business administrator's report?
It is recommended that Board Action Items A through J be approved by consent roll call under ten-member vote.
Second.
Any questions? Ms. Ratner?
Just really quick, I know Dr. Lehman thanked some of our donations. I also just wanted to thank our new partner in the district, Thompson Bark, for working with us, and as well as the MTEA, which donated for the Capturing Kids Heart Professional Development.
Ms. Bora?
I had one question on the bill list. Ms. Allen, this is on the addendum that was shared yesterday. It's check numbers B65168 and 65167. This is for the roof replacement and the electrical work.
Yep.
I'm assuming this is the 1936 roof, $81,000 and $77,000. Can you confirm?
Yeah, these are for the rod grant, the first payments that we are paying for the rod grant.
Right. So this is for that project that's ongoing right now. I wanted to get an understanding. So we shell out $150,000. What happens, what's the process like to get it back? Do we have to wait for the entire project to finish? Or can we start applying as we are spending?
No. Well, we have to wait until we get to a certain point, to the project is a certain percentage complete. But right now, we have other funds in that rod grant. Like, we have the township share, and we have the $1 million of additional state aid that we got, and we had a small budget appropriation. So that money we have on hand that we can pay.
The township money is in hand?
No, we will submit for reimbursement.
Okay. So we still have the $1 million, we have the $1 million, and then beyond that, we can start submitting to the town for reimbursement?
And then we can also, and then at the point when we get to the, I can't recall the percentage of the project completion, we can submit to the state for the rod grant, actually, for the funds from them, for reimbursement.
The reason I ask.
So we basically have to shell out the money first, and then we get reimbursed.
Okay. And that holds true for the $5 million that's coming from the state?
The $5 million is coming from the township.
The one that's coming from the town, can we, can we get reimbursement as we go?
We can.
Okay. All right. Because we don't have that much of a.
Right. Correct. So as soon as we use up these funds, we can start, we can go to the township for their share. And at some point, we will bring in, you know, start to go to the state for their share.
Thank you for that clarification. I also wanted to echo what Ms. Ratner just said, that thank you for all, there's a whole lot of donations here today. So that makes us, and Dr. Lehman, even if it's at 5:00 PM, please feel free to add donations to our agenda. We will not mind. I did also want to get a little bit of clarification between when you say sponsorship and then when you say donation. So the Thompson Bark is a sponsorship, as I understand, for enrichment services and the wrestling team. So how do, do we have the team apparel say something for them, or do we put, like, how do we handle a sponsorship different than a donation?
So Mr. Moraldo, in his role, will work with each donor or sponsor. They could be used interchangeable. In terms of, some say, hey, I have $2,000 and I own a restaurant. How can I contribute to the district? So he says, well, we're running an enrichment program. Would you like to purchase all the supplies? You know, that's about this much money. And they're like, yeah, we'd also like to do a scholarship. It's a conversation about what the district needs, what the donor slash sponsor is interested in receiving. We do have a straight transaction, a donation of $1,000. You could get a sign out at the football field. A lot of the other sponsorships also involve, and donations involve a sign, because we will build in the cost of the sign into their donation or their sponsorship. And as part of that contribution, they say, we also want our name on something. Well, the sign is fine. Or every once in a while, like, I think we did pizza cutters one time with, you know, Cooking with Cantor Pizza Cutters and things like that. So it's a, you know, mutual agreement. The district is always thankful to have these partners. And that's how we really grow all these enrichment experiences. They are not funded through our general operating budget. They are fee-based programs and expanded pretty much exclusively through donations. They're self-sustaining.
The message to our community is that we work with everyone on a case-to-case basis. So it's not like you can only get a sign there. So to start the conversation with Mr. Moraldo, if you want to sponsor something, and he will come up with ideas to how you can contribute towards any program.
And sometimes we have, we've had donors or people that come and say, I have, you know, an inheritance, and I would like to donate $5,000 towards technology to be used in the district, right? So it's a very general piece, and then we have the conversation. And anybody can reach out to myself, Dr. Chanley, anyone. Mr. Moraldo, Ms. Allen, doesn't matter. We'll get the conversation started. And then depending on what their interests are, we can point them in the right direction, or just receive the funds and allocate them to where we need to allocate them to.
It reminds me of a comment, Ms. DePain, you made in your committee meeting about somebody writing $5 million to us in their will. And I was like, what a brilliant idea. We'll take $5,000 at a time in your generous will, just write us.
Take $5,000 a week or a day, you know?
Anytime. But what a great idea that people can, you know, leave us in their legacy money.
That's what the Citizens Advisory Committee is one of their, yeah, how to get more money into our district by the people that belong to the committee and matching and, right, Dr. Lehman, and things like that.
So I just wanted one final comment on that. Everything is grounded in the district needs, right? So that's where everything is centered. If an organization or a person came and said, I have this, then we could also consider that. But there may be times that we decline it as well. It's all centered around district need. So if this, and we have needs that are must-haves, right, we use it before and wants and things like that. So that's what it's driven by, is the district need.
Very good point. Thank you, Dr. Lehman.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, Ms. Allen.
Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
I misspoke last time. So yes to all, recues on letter A for the learning tree.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Puro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, to all, recues on the instrument donation, I believe it's letter H and J, as well as the bill list check B65242 for Mr. Snyder, B65215 for Mr. Lurie, and B65256 for Mr. Rubin.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. It is recommended that Board Action Items K through M be approved by consent roll call under a nine-member vote.
Motion.
Second.
Questions or comments? Ms. Ratner?
Just congratulations on unified grants that are listed.
Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Puro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, to all, recues on letter L, the Marsh Foundation Grant received by Mr. Ratner.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Board President's Report. So first off, I want to thank our staff who helped facilitate our summer programs. Our students have had so many amazing opportunities to participate in a variety of activities, and this would not have been possible without them. And while one area is wrapping up, another is beginning. So our sports teams and marching band have begun their practices for what we know will be another amazing season for our Falcon teams. It's hard to believe that two weeks from today will be our first day of school. I know I affectionately called August the Sunday of summer, and so Monday is coming. But please remember that buses will generally run a little off schedule the first week of school as drivers and families adjust to their new routines. Staff and administration have worked diligently to ensure a smooth opening of our schools. Thank you to everyone for your hard work and dedication to our students. On behalf of the Board of Education, we are looking forward to welcoming everyone back, and we wish all of our staff, students, and families a wonderful and successful start to this school year. But before I do wrap up, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of longtime Board Member Kathy Kolopanowicz. Having grown up in Monroe, Kathy was a staple in our schools. I would always see her attending events and volunteering her time in our classrooms. For over 20 years, Kathy served on the Board of Education, selflessly devoting her time and efforts away from her own family to work towards the betterment of our schools. During her tenure as the longest-serving Board Member in Monroe's history, Kathy helped oversee the building of Oak Tree and Monroe Township High School. It goes without saying that Monroe would not be the district it is today without the foundation that she helped lay for us. It is my hope that this board and all boards after us will continue to serve with the same love and dedication that she did, and to always work with the best interests of our students at the forefront. So thank you, Kathy. You serve Monroe well, and we hope that you rest easy. That concludes my report. Our next item on the agenda is other board business. Does any board member would like to speak? Ms. Ratner?
Yep, just really quick. I can echo your sentiments. It won't take too long. But, you know, I've served on the board for almost three years now. I can't imagine serving 20. So, you know, kudos to anyone who can do that. And then I did notice that New Jersey School Board Association has put out the county meeting dates. As board members, we are all able to go to them. Some of them are hybrid, so you can attend online or in person. Some of them are, I believe, online only. I don't think there's any that are only in person. But definitely look at the School Board Association website for the dates and to register for those. Those are all free of charge for board members.
I would like to start by extending my heartfelt condolences to Kathy's family and sharing a memory that I've always been on that side when Kathy was the president. But there was a time that I worked with her collecting signatures for our, we were going to, we were writing a petition to change funding formula. And Kathy used to go door-to-door. She came to my house. So the service is definitely something that will be, you know, attached to her name to the district that she's given 20 years to. So my heartfelt condolences to the family. I want to echo the thoughts about the sports. It's such a heartwarming feeling driving around in the morning at 7:00 AM, seeing every single field completely occupied by our athletes, working really hard at it. Tryouts are over, and we're excited for the fall season. On other note, there has been, there's been a lot of discussion on the senior parking situation. And I wanted to bring that up here for a quick discussion with Dr. Lehman, if he could inform the public as to why the change was made. So what has happened is that for the last two years, the seniors would have an assigned parking spot in the high school. And the letter that went out to the parents yesterday said that it'll be on a first-come, first-serve basis. So basically, you drive in and you find the first available spot and you park. There's a lot of concern there as to kids who have option two, who will be coming in late every other day, you know, who have gym in the first block. They will probably never find a spot, or would be driving around a lot to find the spot. And also that there is, you know, there's parking in tennis court, parking by the cage field, and parking here. So there is a lot of driving around to look for a free spot, versus, which used to happen every year for the first few days till the spots were assigned, and then things would smooth down. So the concern that's coming out from the parents is that, why was this changed to first-come, first-serve basis? And will it be safe? So, Dr. Lehman, would you share with the public? Would you share with me?
Sure. So I reached out to Dr. Higgins, and he explained that all students that are assigned a parking spot and a parking pass will have a spot. So there will always be enough parking places for anyone who is allowed to drive to school, all the seniors that have that privilege. He said that they used to have unassigned parking spaces. They have recently, the past couple of years, assigned parking spaces. From their experience, they've seen an increase in accidents, fender benders. They see increased unauthorized parking. And most specifically, the student's educational environment has been more impacted with assigned spots. The reason that educational piece is in there is, as you can imagine, whether it's intentional or unintentional, if someone is in someone else's spot, it turns into a ripple effect. And you could end up with two, three, 10, 15, 20 students end up in the wrong spot. And then undoing that becomes extremely disruptive to the student's educational day. So he said, he assured that anyone who would have been assigned a parking spot, so in other words, would be allowed to drive, will have a spot. We've been using, and we were able to expand the high school parking over the years to include the three locations, the high school, the tennis court area, right in front of the tennis court area, and then also up here by the athletic fields and the cage fields. Yep. So we have expanded how many students can drive over the past years. So he understands that both systems have challenges. But their administrative experience, seeing both sides, they believe that this is a better situation for, you know, the students, the novice drivers. And we get it. It's a busy time. We talked about, you know, why do we have coverage in the morning for students that get dropped off? It's to help, you know, alleviate some of that traffic. Speaking to some of the students that may come in after period one, those students, again, would have, would have spots available to them because they are reserved in the sense that if there's 10 students, there's going to be 10 empty spots. So they certainly would have a spot to come to. There'll be less traffic when they're arriving, obviously.
So they can drive around looking for that empty spot?
Yeah. And I think, just like all of us, I think you end up, everybody tends to gravitate to the same area when you come in anyways. So I think we find we get ourselves in a routine. Maybe those students would identify where their spot most likely would end up being at their time of arrival. We do have students that leave, you know, the campus early as well, for early dismissal. And then also, those students that are arriving late are less students that are driving at the 7:10 arrival time, 7:15 arrival time. So that's Dr. Higgins' perspective. My advice to the parents is if you have a concern, specific concern about your son or daughter, if they have a special circumstance, please reach out to him. Him and his team are certainly open to feedback, open to comments. You know, they're available. They have freshman orientation this week, so they're all on site and, you know, looking forward to starting the school year.
Can I ask you a follow-up? So the security team, because I know there are passes given, and then there are some high schoolers that are on waitlist and will probably not get a pass. Do they patrol every day to find out if there are cars parked without passes? Because that tends to happen a lot. So we were saying there's enough spots for the passes allowed. But are we patrolling enough to find the car? Because I've heard that a lot of juniors tend to drive in and park their cars, which they should not be doing.
Correct.
But it's a, is the security team on board with the change?
I think it depends on also what's going on in the building. You know, the security team is certainly present in the parking lots, and I'm glad you brought that up. So as students are arriving, we have our security officers helping students cross the roads during any transition. Because we also have students that cross the road for phys ed and things. And that includes students leaving early. So there's a large chunk of the day where we have a staff member out there. If it's a non-traditional transition time or inclement weather, when no one's out there, there's, unlikely there would be somebody out there. But for the standard arrival times, which would be regular arrival, early in, late in, early out, we will have staff members there and present. One thing that we are not leveraging is the Monroe PD to come through our parking lot and issue summons and things. That's not something that we prefer to do in any way, shape, or form. But we do, you know, we certainly look for patterns. We'll look for, you know, repeat offenders, things like that. And as anything happens, I believe we get in a routine. We identify where things are going. This is a change. Again, any specific questions, I would direct to Dr. Higgins, though.
Is it possible to reevaluate, like, everything, starting of the school year, there's going to be chaos? So even with this change, it's a big change, but there's going to be chaos. We just go with that first few weeks. But can we reevaluate the safety of this idea sometime in October, early October, to see if, you know, there's not too much driving around happening? Are too many seniors tardy in coming in because they're just driving around looking for a parking spot? So they didn't get to school in time, but they had to drive around for five minutes. Now they're stepping in and they're tardy. Can we do an analysis like that?
I think that's standard procedure for anything that we're doing in the buildings. You know, I think if.
A month later?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, you know, this is certainly a change, so he'll be monitoring it. But we, you know, anything we change in the building, we're looking for, you know, whether it's changing it up hallway to a down hallway, we'll look for the unintended consequences, right, the unintended effects and things like that. So that's just the nature of our profession, is if we make changes or when we make changes, we're also looking, you know, do we need a tweak? Do we need to, you know, adjust?
Thank you, Dr. Lehman. I appreciate that. And I do, like you said, they have experience doing both things, assigned spots on assigned spots. So we should trust their experience. So I would ask anybody listening with concerns to go with the flow. Let the students sort of figure it out. And a month later, if there's still concerns, bring it to Dr. Higgins, and we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Any other board members wishing to speak? Mr. Puro?
What is option two? I never heard that before.
So option two is a broad term that allows students to receive credit for alternate, let's consider placements or activities. So one thing we have in place is students can opt out of in-class physical education. And we schedule them as a, this is seniors-only. We schedule them as a first-period physical education class. And what they do is they document, and this is modeled through high schools in the county. They document whether they go to a gym, whether they're, and it's a certain frequency that they have to do it because they have to hit a certain hours if they're a varsity athlete, if they're on an athletic team. And it's assessed each marking period. If they aren't meeting and fulfilling their phys ed requirement, we will require them to attend in person again in class. And there's other option-two pieces. Dr. Rozell spoke to, there's a pathway for students to receive credit in a foreign language and in a world language in an alternative fashion. So what Ms. Bora was speaking to is these students, seniors specifically, if they're taking physical education in a different setting and getting credit for it that way, they'll come in after first block. So they'll park and be in the building for second block on.
It happens each block, though, correct? Because I was told by security that they have a hard time monitoring students because there's always seniors coming and going to go to the gym, or go here, or go there.
So they are scheduled for a first block late in. That's the, that's the, that's the goal for scheduling. If there's some outliers, you know. If there's some outliers, you know, that would be not the ideal, but the goal is a first block late in, and just like it's the early out. So, fourth block if they go to a job, or they go to an internship or something like that. There may be seniors that leave throughout the day for other reasons as well, but the goal is to schedule them for first block. And then they actually, they will come in for health. They have to be present one marking period for health. For seniors this year, that would be third marking period.
Just for clarification, option two is for all high school grade levels?
No, it's for seniors.
Only for seniors?
Yes.
For, for physical education as well?
Yep. And it has to do with how would students that are, say, freshmen be able to, without a parent's driving in, dropping off, and picking up, get themselves to and from?
Right.
It's something we need to explore, you know, in the future. Again, some districts that have it for multiple grade levels have students attend a study hall. It's not an option right now for us because we are busting at the seams, as we all know. But as we, you know, correct things in terms of space, we then can have other conversations and other ways to address it.
Okay, any other board members? Okay, seeing none, the next item on our agenda is public forum. Any member of the public wishing to speak? You have four minutes to state your name and municipality for the record.
Hi, Sarah Zies, Monroe Township. I have a follow-up question about the new teacher for study skills that's going to be hired to teach the sixth-grade career readiness class. According to the agenda, it says that she has a pending certification, so I want to know what she's going to be certified in. And my, my next question is that this agenda is missing information that I've seen on all previous agendas, and that is the enrollment information by school. I want to know why that's missing. And furthermore, when I saw the previous agenda, I noticed that the middle school had forty-one students, less than it did the prior year at the same time. And I was wondering if I can, if I, if I send you or Dr. James Higgins an email, can I get the breakdown of student enrollment change in fifth, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, year over year, to see? Because if, because if, if the enrollment decreases by forty-one students for the whole middle school, I mean, how do I know how many of those students are sixth grade, seventh grade, or eighth grade? So, I was wondering if it's possible to get a breakdown of enrollment change by grade level for the middle school? So, just two questions.
Would you like an answer? So, regarding any staff member that we bring on board, we hire them pending certification, pending our HR process going through, making sure fingerprints are squared away and things like that. So, that's a standard piece for us, for someone that's coming in new from out of the district.
So, they're not certified in any particular subject? Or?
We're not going to talk about any staff members specifically.
Okay.
So, we're going to talk about staff members in general.
All right.
Staff members in general, when they come in, they come in with either provisional, certificate of advance standings. So, as HR, now that the staff members approve, they will go through, and they will, they will notify the state that any staff member that is brought on board now can be transitioned to the next level of certification if they're non-tenured, things like that.
Okay.
It's, like I said, it's a standard process for any staff member we bring on board. We hire them pending completion of all the other paperwork that they need to do.
Okay.
And, you know, drug screenings and things like that.
And the enrollment information? Why is enrollment information not here by schools? And can I get it by grade level breakdown?
Do you want to answer? Feel free to answer.
I asked this question before. I don't know where you went.
I, I'm sorry. I must have left.
It's because it's the summertime, so they're going to be back on the agenda starting in September.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. And, and can I get a grade level breakdown of the change?
Yeah, that's something we can certainly look into. It's, because I know there was, you know, an Oprah request and things like that.
Yes, yes.
So, I have to look into the reasoning behind whether that was approved or not approved. You know, we certainly have the monthly enrollment by school by big chunk.
Yes.
And then, you know, if you ask me enrollment right now, it'll be different than eleven o'clock tomorrow morning, and it'll be different than four o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
Just any point in time for like, you know, was the difference in sixth grade? Was the difference in seventh grade?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
And I think, you know, that's a question that we'll work through, is to what granular level do we communicate that out at? Are we looking at, you know, just as, I know you're asking for something specific, but what does that lead to? Are we looking at class, you know, what, to what extent are we?
I just want to look at the total number of sixth-grade students.
And I understand that, but I just want to put that in perspective of how far we're required to, how far we need to, how far we're allowed to, before we risk, you know, potentially, you know, any concerns we may have in the district. I don't know, you know, but I'm not giving you an answer right now.
Okay.
So, but I certainly can, we can, like I said, talk to Mr. Weiss. We will figure out to what granular level we can dig in and provide you.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
My name is Dominic Torito. I don't live in the township, but my children go to school here. Last meeting, I had brought up the Freedom to Read Act, which has passed the Assembly and is moving to the Senate in New Jersey. And it is, it was voted overwhelmingly by the Assembly and has traction to pass in the fall session. It's supported by the NGAA and the Librarians Association, and I'd like to know, because I tried to see if it was on the plank of any of your campaigns, but I couldn't find any of that, if this board is in favor or not of that bill, because it could be important to parents making educational choices for their children, and also for parents in voting booths.
What is it? The Freedom?
The Freedom to Read Act. I brought this up at the last meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I, I did not read about it, so I'm, I'm not aware of what exactly it is. Does anybody else?
I can tell you what it is. It lifts liability off of any type of media or book placed in libraries, either public or school. It lifts the liability off the person who puts that in the library regardless of obscenity, pornography, whether it's age-appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, certainly we would have to read about it.
Sure.
And learn more and discuss it as a board. I feel like this would definitely be something, if legislation was passed, that it would come then to policy.
Sure.
And we would have to be put, you know, certainly would want to put policies in place.
Judging by like how proactive we all want to be here, I was just wondering if you were.
Ms. Ratner, did you want to say something?
Or if there was a way to get this onto a future agenda or a way, because I think this is very important.
Right.
And I think a lot of parents would think this is very important. And I know there's not a lot of people in this room right now, but they vote, and.
Sure. Absolutely. Ms. Ratner, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, from my understanding of the legislation, we can obviously discuss it at greater length at a committee meeting. I'm happy to do that if, if that's what, you know, the committee decides. It doesn't provide for specificities as to what books and things will be in libraries. It allows parents to opt out without requiring libraries to opt out of books that there might be some parents that are not happy with.
So, it sounds like.
The conclusion of the bill basically takes the onus off of whoever puts that book in the library, whether it's inappropriate or not. So, it's more of the same when it comes to the politic type of stuff, where you just get to do whatever you want, and there's no, no consequences.
Mr. Tifano, do you want to say something?
Yeah, just, I, I want you to understand that no matter what any of us think up here, if we get a policy sent to us from the state and there's an M at the top of it, that means mandated by the state, which means we don't get to vote on it. So, if it passed.
I wasn't asking you about a vote. I was asking you about a position.
Right. Well, my position is irrelevant because I can't change something that's mandated by the state. That's something that the school has to follow by state.
I think your position is relevant as far as your constituents wanting to know what your positions are.
Correct.
I, I think parents and voters would be interested in something like this. Should it pass, which it passed overwhelmingly in the first house, it looks like it will pass, regardless of whether you can do anything about it, that is what the voter is unable to do by knowing your position, which is why I am interested in knowing your position on this.
I think it all depends on what comes down from the state after, if, if, when it does pass and it comes to, into our hands, and that becomes a discussion of the board. We're a board of committees, so it would go to the Legislative Action Committee, it would go to the Policy Committee, and we would talk about, you know, this is the legislation that's here, and this is what it will look like here in Monroe.
Okay.
I'm Michelle Arminio, nine Nathaniel Street, again. I, I think, I'm so grateful for the resolution of the impact fees. I think one of the things that this board should do is really put that out to the public. We've been talking about it for years and years and years. We see what not having impact fees does to our infrastructure and our community. So, please, you know, people have asked, what should they do to get involved? This is the kind of thing people should take from the board and send it to their legislators. And we should have a discussion about this on a regular basis, because this is essential to our future funding. And now, I'm going to do something that's sort of out of character for me, and I hope I don't ever have to do it again, but I want to clarify something I said last meeting, and I do have a prepared statement. As a member of the community, I attend and participate in public meetings as a concerned citizen. It has come to my attention that my, the comments I made in person during the July 30th, 2024 Public Board of Education meeting were reported on social media and editorialized by the person posting. That person was not present at that meeting, and to clarify my statements. Number one, Senator Greenstein is fully aware of the Board Education, of the Board of Education's financial and budgetary pressures. I'd like to thank Board Member DePaine for her attention to this ongoing matter of state funding and her involvement in continuing to bring the information to our state representative's senior, Senator Greenstein. So, in no way was I disparaging Ms. DePaine last month. I just want to make that clear.
I didn't think you were.
I didn't think you did. But social media is, can be a terrible thing.
I don't read it, so.
Neither do I. That's why this is out of character for me. Number two, I did not slam our current President Katie Fabiano. Fabiano, President Fabiano inherited the dismantling of the policies designed to bring transparency and more public engagement to the Monroe school systems. Instead, and while I disagree with the time, the timer, I have no, no issues with the fact that this board has chosen to do so. What I try to do when I come is to deal with the actions of the board and express my displeasure if, if I am unhappy with it and the reasons why. Aside from that, I believe that President Fabiano, your efforts and demeanor are a slam dunk.
Thank you.
Not slamming.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
When I address my, my elected officials, it is not to criticize in a demeaning or derogatory manner. It is not personal. I limit my comments to the actions and the decisions of the board. I don't slam, and I do not demean board members. I have institutional history and knowledge of past encounters and experience with other government officials and community members. I hope to share these experiences for information, for informational purpose only, and not to demean anyone, or to diminish their efforts or their actions or votes. Each board member brings something to the table, representing a variety of the public opinions you were elected to represent. Mr. Tifano and I have worked for, together for years, often disagreeing, but when ideas have merit, those ideas should be considered regardless of who makes the suggestions. The educational system needs practical and useful ideas and support. We, as a community and you as board members, owe the district staff and students of Monroe a concerted effort to work together for the enhancement and achievement of our school and district of our students. And as anyone who chooses to misrepresent the facts that other people talk, speak, and statements they make in this room, we cannot be silent for fear of bad actors exploiting those facts. So, personal vindictive, and my last comment, which is again a little bit off, personal vindictiveness is harmful to our mission as educators and is an unkind pursuit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arminio. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Looking at some of the members here.
Just state your name, just state your municipality.
George Gunkelman, five Kelly Court, Monroe.
Thank you.
I got an electric bill like everybody else. Stick of shock. It's sixty-seven degrees in here. Why? We're wasting money. I, I know what it costs to keep my house at a reasonable temperature, and it wasn't sixty-seven. So, let's find a way. Maybe someone was expecting four hundred people to fill in here tonight, but I've been to enough board meetings to know that we don't need to bring it down, you know, to prepare for that, because they're not coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public forum. The next item on our agenda is a closed session resolution for a second closed session, which we are going to enter into. So, I'll read the resolution. Whereas Senator Byron Embert, Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 1044-6 provides that the Monroe Township Board of Education may hold an executive session from which the public is excluded to discuss matters that are confidential or are one of the nine subject matters listed Section 12B of the Act. And whereas the board hereby declares that its discussion of the following subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure, now therefore be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the board shall go into executive session to discuss the following items. Additional items may be determined and announced as needed.
There's only one issue, if I'm not mistaken, that's going to be addressed in public, in private session, pardon me, and that's a continued discussion of the Arminio versus Monroe Township Board of Education matter, about which the board will ask, and I will provide legal advice.
Motion.
Hold on, Matt Don. This last one, too. Be it further resolved, that this discussion may be disclosed to the public, and reasons for discussing and acting upon it, and closed session no longer exists, action may be taken on any of the items stated above. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We should be in closed session for about thirty minutes? Thirty minutes? Thirty minutes. Thirty minutes.
And just for the, for the benefit of the public, we are not going to be taking any formal action in executive session. If there is any formal action that will be taken, it will be done out here in front of the public in the sunshine. We will be returning to this room after executive session for the purpose of adjourning the meeting, but all are welcome to remain in this room, should you wish to. Hang out. Thank you.